Like you get, you're a survivor, you're strong.
The kids come from all over the US and even Canada and get treated to an entire week of all things Hollywood.
We try to treat them like VIPs. We try to give them the Hollywood experience.
We've been doing this for 33 years, bringing just a moment, a moment of joy back into their lives that cancer took away.
G.W. Bailey, actor and executive producer for the TV show Major Crimes, is front and center when it comes to helping out the kids. He and the studio treat them to a studio tour, lunch, and a screening of the show Major Crimes.
Who was your favorite character in Major Crimes?
Oh, it was you, of course.
Oh, well, of course.
For the last 10 years, the LAPD has pitched in to help make the kids' visit extra special.
We admire your courage. We're very proud of each and every one of you. This is a great way that we get to show in a small way that we're with you. Your fight is our fight.
Their day with LAPD normally comes out number one, and we're very proud of that fact.
Well, okay, there's that, and the hobnobbing with the stars is pretty cool, too. All in all, a five-star day and a five-star week, one these kids will likely never forget. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The Sunshine Kids Foundation serves some 70 hospitals around the country, giving kids dream trips to places like LA and other major cities and attractions. While high-end Italian dining will be one option on the menu when renovations to this shopping mall are finito, Gil Reyes has more from Century City.
The Westfield Group, with malls in Sherman Oaks, Topanga, and Arcadia, previews what it calls its greatest shopping center to date.
Imagine wandering to the most fashion-forward shops, or experience fresh-to-farm table dining, or having a beer after working at Italy's new rooftop garden. And a week after we open, I invite you all to that garden, and I'll buy you a beer.
First rounds on CEO Peter Loewy when his new Westfield Century City is unveiled. At this news conference, the company announces renovations throughout the entire shopping center, which first opened in 1964. Plans include doubling the amount of parking, a new two-level Macy's store, also the West Coast's first Italy marketplace, with high-end Italian dining, a bakery, even a cooking school. You will also be able to buy fresh produce here and take it home if you wish. Westfield says 10,000 construction and permanent jobs will be added, generating more than a billion dollars to our economy.
And then after that billion dollars is invested, we estimate we'll get a billion dollars for the county and city of Los Angeles, just in the economic activity and the sales taxes that will come out of this, which means we can put money into roads and money to protect critical services like our fire and police.
Stores are already slowly closing for renovations. The first phase of mall construction is expected to be completed around holiday time 2016. In Century City, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The Purple Line will also have a stop near the mall in about 10 years. While now may be a good time to seriously consider finally opening up that small business you've always wanted, as Gil Reyes reports, the city's application and permitting process is about to pick up speed.
Remen cutting day?
We don't have one yet.
Ask most any aspiring small business owner, getting your bar or restaurant to finally open in the city could take weeks, months, sometimes years, with all the necessary paperwork. But LA Mayor Eric Garcetti says soon the city's long and often confusing application process could be completed in a single day.
To make sure that we navigate the licensing and registration process for a small business in under 24 hours, because there's no reason it should take any longer than that.
The city of LA's idea is an open-source internet portal to streamline permitting. This innovation wins top prize in a national contest hosted by the US Small Business Administration. At the future site of the LA Clean Tech Incubator, the SBA's Maria Contreras-Sweet says most of the nation's job growth is attributed to small businesses, so we need to support them.
When you support small, you're creating local jobs in our own neighborhoods. We're employing our own families.
City leaders say the $250,000 prize money will help launch the web portal within a year. In downtown LA, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Now, other US cities will be able to replicate LA's website to speed up their permitting applications as well. While the city attorney gets a special honor, a popular summer program is extended, and a grand entrance is planned for a city park. All these stories and more in City B. City Attorney Mike Fuer received an Ethel Levitt Award for humanitarian service at the 34th Annual Levitt and Quinn Stand for Justice Gala, held at the Skirball Cultural Center. Levitt and Quinn is a nonprofit family law center that provides affordable legal representation to low-income families. The annual gala recognizes family and civil law attorneys, businesspeople, and community leaders who seek justice for underserved communities. Fuer was one of several honorees to accept an award for helping expand access to legal services for low-income individuals.
The importance of the work is in courtrooms and courthouses throughout the state every day, where people who don't have lawyers suddenly do have a meaningful way to vindicate their rights in the justice system.
Mayor Eric Garcetti launched Fall Friday Nights, an eight-week extension of the Summer Night Lights program that will keep eight LA parks open late on Friday nights, with staff and activities like dance and sports. The program is geared towards young people to keep them occupied and off the streets. Officials say the program gives families safe places to play, learn, and grow. Councilmember Paul Corretts gets in a little workout at the new outdoor fitness zone at the Palms Recreation Center on Overland Avenue. Corretts, the Department of Rec and Parks, and other community members came together for the grand opening. The new outdoor fitness equipment replaces what was just a grass field. The Friends of West LA provided a donation to Palms Park for the installation of the new fitness zone, which includes five pieces of workout equipment. Up to 13 people can get in a workout at any given time.
This will help our kids and adults get fit and stay fit.
Councilman Gilbert Sadio joined the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Bureau of Engineering, and LA Sanitation for a groundbreaking ceremony to celebrate upcoming entryway improvements at the south entrance to MacArthur Park. The Seventh and Alvarado Gateway Plaza will welcome residents and visitors to the park with an arc of seat walls anchored by two cultural interpretive 15-foot steel pillars that will be lit and identify the park and immediate community as MacArthur Park and West Lake. Officials say the lake project will improve the water quality of the lake, reduce the lake's freshwater usage by 2.8 million gallons per year, and eliminate discharge into the city's storm drain system. While it was a bittersweet day for an LAPD horse and those who have worked with him, as he says goodbye to one journey, he begins another. Rasha Goel has more.
Meet Cowboy. He has worked with LAPD officer and head trainer Joe Willey since the day he joined the force. Cowboy is now retiring from the LAPD, but his work is not done. He's moving to another place.
It's a day of mixed emotions. It's a sad day, no doubt about it. He's been an integral part of our program, but we want to be consistent with the horse's nature and what he's really about, and there's only so much that a horse can endure in terms of the kinds of situations that we put him in.
Cowboy has been working with the LAPD since he was three years old and has been working for 18 years. From protecting the president to Laker celebrations, he's pretty much seen it all.
Probably most significantly, this horse has participated in the training of every policeman who's been here since he's been here.
Now, he will be bringing comfort to those with disabilities. Cowboy will be part of Mach One, a therapeutic riding program at the Pasadena Equestrian Center.
We take horses and put our children and adults with disabilities on them to give them a sense of balance and hand-eye coordination, independence. So, the horse that's coming in today, Cowboy, will be used mostly for riders that want to become independent.
The best thing that we're doing for this horse is giving him a job. He will actually have a job where children will be doting on him and brushing him and pampering him, and he's going to get treats and he's going to be spoiled.
For now, Cowboy's riding days are far from over as a new adventure lies ahead. I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
Now, Cowboy is the second LAPD horse to be donated to the program. While as part of his ongoing work to green the valley, Councilmember Bob Blumenfield cut the ribbon on the new Blumenfield Waterwise Demonstration Garden at the West Valley Municipal Center in Reseda. That's the focus of this week in tweets. Councilmember Bob Blumenfield's office tweeted a video of the ribbon cutting in Reseda, posting, "Ribbon Cutting at our Waterwise Demonstration Garden. With 20,000 square feet of turf removed, we can save 500,000 gallons a year." Blumenfield's office retweeted a post from the LADWP, which showed a pic of the new water-friendly garden, saying, "Waterwise Demonstration Garden to save 500,000 gallons of water a year. Create your own." The LA Conservation Corps tweeted, "Very proud of our core members who worked on this beautiful Waterwise Demo Garden in CD3." And the LA Public Library also tweeted about the event, posting, "Proud to be part of today's Waterwise Garden Ribbon Cutting, and excited to see it become a beautiful blooming field." And that's a look at this week in tweets. While at 70, 80, sometimes 90 years young, many of LA seniors continue to make a difference in our neighborhoods, as Gil Reyes reports, one councilman threw a party to say thanks.
The young at heart, having a good old time.
Oh, while I'm doing the salsa and a little medingay, hey, it's fun.
Hundreds of seniors gathering here at the LA Convention Center for this special luncheon and talent show hosted by Councilman Curran Price. These are people from churches and senior centers, from the Councilman's South LA District primarily, and many of them don't mind telling you that they're remaining very active even during their retirement.
Senior fraud is the number-one form of elder abuse in the country.
Adrian O'Mansky, a retired teacher, now leads an acting troupe made up entirely of seniors. These actors visit community centers and perform skits about hidden senior scams on the internet.
If you see anything on the computer that doesn't look right, delete. If someone calls you and says to you that you owe money to the IRS, this is one of the number-one scams in the United States.
We need more seniors to become active.
Amos Fried, a retired attorney, uses his legal skills to set up food assistance programs for the needy.
This is, I mean, I am basically committed to try to help out in this issue, working with the council people.
The seniors bonded over chicken lunch and entertainment.
It's a fun way to celebrate our community, bringing the community together, and celebrating the special role that senior citizens play and continue to play in our community.
Because for them, there's still much more to contribute. In downtown LA, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
And of course, lunch and entertainment were all free. While it was a long time coming, but residents in Woodland Hills finally can enjoy a new community amenity that honors local first responders. This fire truck represents former Fire Station 84, which used to be housed here at Canoga Avenue and Costanzo Street in Woodland Hills from 1949 until 2007, when the station was moved to a new location. And for nearly eight years before becoming this play area for kids, officials say the vacant lot was an eyesore in the community, falling into disrepair and creating blight in the neighborhood. But not anymore, as the site has been transformed into a neighborhood attraction.
I am delighted. We just had this baby in March, and it's exciting for me to take walks in the neighborhood and feel comfortable in the neighborhood, and stop over here and just sit on the grass and play with him, and one day he'll be able to climb up there, so it's nice.
As the lot sat empty, Councilmember Bob Blumenfield reached out to the community to get their ideas on what they wanted at the site. The majority agreed on a park that would honor the old fire station, and after two years, they got what they asked for. Community members recently joined Blumenfield, the Department of Rec and Parks, and other city officials to help unveil and dedicate two new plaques.
It's not only a great amenity, a parklet for this area, but also a great testament to our public safety, folks, and specifically for our firefighters.
Residents say the new park adds value to the neighborhood by providing a place where families can gather and spend time. The $1 million park includes a red plaque structure in the shape of a fire truck, shade canopies, and a drought-tolerant garden.
This is probably the best use of the property that I could think of over the years.
The unveiling comes several months after a ribbon-cutting ceremony introducing the park to the community.
I really like the theme. It's fun. The children seem to really like it, so we're excited about it.
A fire truck that kids can call their own, and what can be better than that? The park will be open from dawn to dusk. While a fundraising event for you and your best friend, Beethoven, comes to life as the LA Philharmonic kicks off its winter season, and a ride at Griffith Park that will scare your socks off. All this and this week's things to do. Here's your chance to spend some quality time with your best bud. For 19 years, Best Friends Animal Society has hosted Strut Your Mut, the fundraising walk and festival that helps raise money for local animal welfare organizations in cities around the country. And this year, they're upping the fun quotient by adding the timed 5K race to even more Strut Your Mut events. So leash up your pup, unleash that inner athlete, and join the fun. Runners will start ahead of walkers, and after the race, awards will be given to the first-place male and female finishers, as well as their pups. All runners get a great Strut Your Mut technical shirt, while dogs receive their own sporty bandana just for participating. The event takes place on Saturday, October 10, at Exposition Park, located at 700 Exposition Park Drive. For tickets, prices, and to sign up, visit strutyourmut.org. The LA Phil's winter season kicks off with the dramatic works of Beethoven for both young ones and adults. Pioneering symphonies for youth mix music with fun and fantasy for children ages 5 to 11. As part of the immortal Beethoven Festival, the Sim Bolvar Symphony Orchestra of Venezuela takes us on an imaginary tour of the house where Beethoven was born. Come for the chance to experience a live orchestra through the fantasy of theater in some of the most exciting music ever written. Each performance is preceded by a choice of art workshops, including an instrument petting zoo, dance, and more. The performance takes place Saturday, October 10, at 11:00 AM at the Walt Disney Concert Hall in downtown LA. For tickets to this concert and other immortal Beethoven performances, visit laphil.com. For thrill seekers, check out the Los Angeles Haunted Hayride. The famed Griffith Park attraction takes folks on a ride through the old zoo, where they'll face the underworld and portrayals of the seven deadly sins. This year features new mazes, interactive theater, a 40-foot-long leviathan, and returning favorites, such as the scary-go-round, House of Mirrors, and more. Tickets range from $30 to $58. The adventure begins at 7:00 PM at 4730 Crystal Springs Avenue in Griffith Park. Visit losangelishauntedhayride.com for more. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
911 emergency operator 271.
The city of Los Angeles receives over 2 million 911 calls every year. Hello, I'm Mayor Eric Garcetti.
I'm Chief Charlie Beck. A significant number of 911 calls are not emergencies.
911 should be used for emergency calls, such as preservation of life, a crime in progress, prevention of a crime, or a public hazard.
If your call is not an emergency, such as a loud party, verbal dispute, public nuisance, or lost or missing property, you can dial 1-877-ASK-LAPD to have the police respond.
Remember, call 1-877-ASK-LAPD for non-emergency calls.
Council Police Department, what are you reporting?
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Members, report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. I do want to give a shout out to Mr. Buscagino, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, O'Farrell, and Price for being today's members of the on-time caucus. Members, if you're in your offices, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for the day. Sit down, brother Parker. The Los Angeles City Council, your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. Public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield, Bonner, Buscagino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corresco, Corian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Drew, West, and 11 members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Fuentes moves. Englander seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Price moves. Martinez seconds. Next.
Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that items 1N, O, and R be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid in full, and that items 1X, Y, and S be continued to October 21. In addition, the Office of Finance recommends that item 2C be received and filed in as much as the taxpayer has satisfied the liability.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order. So let's go through the rest of the items.
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 21 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on 1, 2, 6, 12, and 20.
Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Tabulate the vote. We'll get there.
11 ayes?
All right, 11 ayes. Let's move on, Mr. Clerk, to the next section.
Very good, sir. Items 22 through 33 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items 31 and 33 have been submitted.
Specials, members, specials. Items 22 through 33, I do not see any. Let us prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Continue.
Mr. President, items 34 through 43 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body?
Very good, sir. For those items, we do have cards on items 37, 40, and 43.
Okay, we'll hold those items. Members, specials on any of the other items. Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over one week for a second read unless reconsidered later with 12 members.
Okay, thank you. I've been informed we need to reconsider item 26. So, members, at this point, we're going to vote on reconsideration. Item 26. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, we'll hold that item on the desk.
Very good, sir.
Mr. Fuentes.
I'd like to ask for reconsideration on item 1. From yesterday's agenda, 1W and 1AH, they were liens. We inadvertently did not ask for the additional time. We've been working with the constituents. They were on yesterday's agenda.
Okay, so let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
So, you want to hold these for?
Two weeks. 1W and 1AH.
So is that October 21, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Two weeks for reconsider to October 21.
Okay, so we'll do that. Mr. Corcoran, did you have that look? Mr. Corian, did you have that look in your eye?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Similarly, I'd like to ask that the council reconsider the vote yesterday on Item 1O regarding 11101 West Ventura Boulevard. I'd like to ask that that be reconsidered for purposes of continuance of two weeks.
Okay, so on that item, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
So that item as well will be continued until October 21st? So what item is that, Mr. Clerk? You're saying Item 44?
Yes, sir. Item 44 is an item scheduled for closed session.
Mr. Corian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 44 is a settlement of an employment case. Budget and finance has considered the matter and recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations for settlement. That can be resolved in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you like to read that item?
Yes, sir. For Item 44, in the case entitled Michael Peirano versus City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to expend $150,000 in settlement.
Okay, now let's actually vote on the item. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, let's move on. In fact, Mr. Clerk, we are at 12. Why don't we vote on reconsideration for the ordinances? Would you like to identify them?
Yes, sir. Those would be Items 34 through 36, and 38, and 39.
Okay, so the first vote is on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Now, we'll actually vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. We have a card, Mr. Clerk, on Item 37. I think we'll deal with that now. Mr. Murphy, Sean Murphy, Item 37.
Morning, Mr. President. This item is important. Please pass it.
Thank you. On this item, 37, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, and, Mr. O'Farrell, before I get to you, I'm going to just go through a couple of quick cards, a couple of quick items. Item 12, Sean, come back. If you would, sir, we're on Item 12. Please come back.
Item 12 is another item. Support it.
Thank you. On this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Mr. Walsh on Item 2, please come forward. And then after that, Mr. Previn, I'm going to do Item 6. Yes, sir.
Sean Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting @HollywoodDems. This is Item Number 2, which is, in fact, concerning money that unpaid liens and hearing protests relative to Office of Finance reports requesting approval to record liens against taxpayers for unpaid taxes, including one from Mr. Lester for $33,000, another one, Rockford Bennett, $16,000, another one, True Phone, $4,000. Did you have a contract with True Phone? Contract with these people? In fact, this is just the tip of the iceberg. You have millions of dollars in unpaid loans. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Stay there, Mr. Walsh. And, Mr. Previn, I'm going to do another Walsh item, then I'll get to you. So on this item, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. We're going to now move to Item 40, and then we'll do 6, Mr. Previn. Mr. Walsh, Item 40.
Well, thank you for the compliment. They're now known as Walsh Items. And communication from the chair concerning citywide economic development plan. This is for the worthless Economic and Workforce Development Department. The only reason the city... You have absolutely no credit for the increase in sitcoms here in L.A., which is about the only thing that's been increasing. Economic development in this city steers itself. I like the term "boomerang funds" for affordable housing. In fact, I think you've built seven or eight city affordable units in the past year, and you've allowed the teardown of about 400 or 500. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, thank you. So let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, and before we go to the next item, Mr. Sadio, I see Mr. Sadio is here. We have a visitor with us today, an individual that you and I served with in the Assembly. So I'd like to present to the body former Assemblyman Anthony Pachetti. Anthony, raise your hand. Give Anthony a round of applause. He's a good man, and it was an honor to serve with you. Mr. Previn, Item 6.
Thank you, sir. It is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. I hope you had a nice recess. Welcome back. I did try yesterday to speak. There was a little bit of a cluster problem.
Item 6. We're on Item 6 now.
No, no, sir, but we're just getting acquainted. It's been a little while. I want to say hello.
We're on Item 6, Mr. Previn.
No, I'm familiar with that, sir. This is the protest against the proposed improvement and maintenance of the Francisco and 8th Street lighting district. But, sir, yesterday, Item 6 was...
No, we're on Item 6. Thank you, Mr. Previn. You want to speak? Speak to Item 6.
Thanks.
Okay, then let's prepare to vote on that item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And for those of you in the audience and maybe watching this on television, when you're called up to speak on an item, you must speak to that item. So with that said, Mr. O'Farrell, are you ready to go? So I'm going to say, Mr. O'Farrell, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. President. Colleagues, this morning I am joined by a very special guest. One of us plays a model on television, and one of us has graced the cover of GQ magazine. Can you tell which one? A big hint, it's not me. No, I want to... I'm very, very pleased to be making this presentation. And before I introduce our very special guest, that's Mr. Niall DeMarco, I just want to acknowledge Richard Pope with the Department of Disability right here who's doing our signing this morning. Big round of applause for Mr. Richard Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Pope.
And a big round of applause for Bertha Velazquez, who is on the Deaf Festival Committee and who actually founded the event for City Hall. Big round of applause for Bertha Velazquez, right here. As you may know, we hosted the 17th Annual Deaf Festival Los Angeles here at City Hall this past weekend and recognize September as Deaf Awareness Month. I am glad to be joined by Niall DeMarco, who is breaking ground as the first deaf participant in the popular and long-running television show America's Next Top Model. DeMarco has made an impression on his fellow castmates, helping them understand the deaf community in ways they never had before. He is also teaching them how to sign. Niall joined us this weekend as the master of ceremonies for this year's Deaf Festival L.A. Fashion Show. He also took us a few strolls down the runway. You may also recognize Niall from his role as Garrett in the ABC Family Network, Switched at Birth. Niall is changing perceptions some of us may have of the deaf community, combating the assumption that deaf people are always in need of help. DeMarco grew up in a family that adheres to the outlook that deafness is a unique difference, that the deaf are like a minority or an ethnic group rather than a disability. He was raised in an environment where opportunities were without limits. His biggest role model, growing up, was his math teacher at the Maryland School for the Deaf, who he says always related to his students as equals. So perhaps not surprisingly, DeMarco majored in mathematics at Gallaudet and once planned to become a math teacher for the deaf himself. For now, with those mathematical visions set to the side, as he lands modeling and TV contracts for the likes of Hugo Boss, and as I mentioned, has graced the cover of GQ magazine, please join me in a warm round of applause and recognize Niall DeMarco for being an excellent role model, not only for the deaf and hard-of-hearing community, but for all of us here in Los Angeles and around the world. Niall?
Thank you very much for having me here. It is an extreme honor, and it's a great beginning, not only for myself, but for all of us. I guess that's it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
When you look this good, you don't need to say a whole lot. All right, so I would like to present this award. On behalf of all of us, Mr. DeMarco, thank you for your contributions and for helping to change the perception of the deaf community to the rest of the world. Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Thank you very much. You know what, members? We're, I think, very fortunate today that we have one of our partners with the city, partners with city government with us today in our own Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce. So why don't we go to Item 43, and let me ask Mr. Tobin and his group to come forward? Welcome, gentlemen, and we want to thank you in advance for all of the work that you've done to help make this city a better city, and of course, all of the work that you've done with the members of the Los Angeles City Council. Ruben, is that a part in your hair, I see? Ruben is looking stylish. I made him turn red. Anyway, Mr. Tobin?
Thank you, President Wesson and members of the City Council. It's our pleasure...
Oh, you know what, Gary? I'm going to interrupt you. I was just informed I have cards. And why don't we bring those folk up first to speak? Please stay where you are. I want to start out with Brother Keith Parker. Please come forward. Ted Green. Ezra Gale. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council President Wesson and members of the City Council. Thank you for your support for CASH for Colleges. This is a wonderful program and a wonderful effort that you've undertaken to help us get young people, not only career-interested and college-interested, but get young people productive. And so our Education Committee of the L.A. Chamber, we really do appreciate your support. We certainly want them all to become Bruins, don't we, Mr. Sadio, Mr. Carrizo, Mr. Fuentes? Don't we want them to become Bruins, but we want those kids to be job-ready, to be career-ready, to be college-ready? So thank you for your support.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ted Green. I've been coming to City Hall since Mayor Bradley, the great Mayor Bradley, appointed me to the Youth Advisory Council in the '70s. Still excited to be here today. And I want to call your attention to the importance of modernizing LAX. You know, it's a real economic engine for Los Angeles. I've been around long enough to remember before the '84 Olympics, when the double-deck was put in place at LAX, and what a revolution that was. In the '90s, I led a group called Citizens for a Strong LAX that successfully fought taking funds away from the airport. And we were calling for modernization then, and here we are 20 years later with a need to modernize LAX. You know, you only have one opportunity to make a first impression, and for visitors who are coming to Los Angeles, often their first impression is LAX. And frankly, we're not putting our best foot forward there. And it's time for LAX to be modernized. I want to make sure that you keep that on your radar screen. It's also important for people who live and work in Los Angeles that use LAX all the time. And of course, cargo that comes through LAX is crucial to Los Angeles and to our economy as the prominence of just-in-time manufacturing has increased. Cargo that moves through LAX has to be expedited. You know, we are on the precipice of the century of Los Angeles being dominant, and we deserve an airport that suits that role. I mean, if we're going to be the capital, the East Coast capital of the Pacific Rim, it's important that we have an airport that suits the role that we play in the nation and in the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And what is it? Begal, Rue Begal, Cynthia Ruiz? Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Sure. Thank you, Council President and Council members. My name's Ezra Gale. I'm with the Building Industry Association. We represent residential home developers throughout Los Angeles County. I want to thank the chamber for bringing us all here today, and I want to speak to the importance of developing an effective strategy to support the development of affordable housing here in Los Angeles. As we all know, we're extremely hard-pressed to find enough units to house Angelinos. I want to especially thank Councilmember Sadio and Councilmember Fuentes for their tireless work on supporting creative ways to increase the number of affordable housing units throughout the city. We're especially proud of the House L.A. initiative, and we think that it will be extremely useful in helping create more units for more Angelinos. So thank you all for your support, and we continue to push for more housing here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. So please come forward and identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Rosio Bonsell. I'm with Southern California Grantmakers. I'm here representing Chris Essel. I'm the new Public Policy Manager with SEG, and as part of this new effort, one of our priorities is to collaborate, to find solutions to combat homelessness. We are active, we are proud members of the chamber and active members of Home for Good and the Funders Collaborative. And in order to handle this crisis, we believe it's important to break down silos and leverage resources from the business community and philanthropy to truly catalyze systemic change. And we applaud your efforts to devote resources to this crisis, and we look forward to working together as you continue to develop your strategic plan. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And after you, we have John Holland... Wait, I thought I saw him. Hi, welcome.
Good morning, Council President, Council members. My name is Cynthia Ruiz, and I am representing Cynthia M. Ruiz and Associates. I'm happy here to support the Chamber of Commerce and their efforts this morning. And just a friendly reminder, I know that you guys are very aware of the competitiveness at the Port of Los Angeles, and I want to thank you for your efforts, but I also want to make sure that that stays on your radar. As the port moves forward, the Port of Long Beach is now putting online Middle Harbor, which is a very modernized container port, so we want to make sure... which is a very modernized container port, so we want to make sure that, you know, we don't forget about the competitiveness and realize that the Port of Los Angeles is an economic engine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And after John, I want Mr. Walsh and Mr. Previn.
Thank you, Mr. President. John Holland with the Central City Association. CCA has joined the Chamber, VICA, a number of other business organizations as longtime advocates for gross receipts tax reduction. City of Los Angeles has some of the highest gross receipts taxes in the region, and it discourages investments in Los Angeles. This is a tax on receipts. This is not a tax on income. This is not a tax on profits. So high-volume, low-margin businesses and industries are often put at a disadvantage and often seek to locate in places other than the city of Los Angeles. This hits the city. This hits people looking for jobs. This is money that's not going to investments. This is money that's not going to equipment, and this is money that is not going to hiring new workers. If you look on the Chamber's packet here, number one is make business growth and job creation the number-one priority in City Hall. And, Mr. President, you're to be thanked for creating the Jobs Committee to tackle this. And a good way of doing this is to send the signal to businesses that are located in the city of Los Angeles and businesses that are looking to move to the city of Los Angeles to say that, yes, this is a business-friendly city, and we are finding every way we can to reduce costs, with the largest of which, on a number of those businesses, is the gross receipts tax. Please keep going forward on that. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Walsh, Mr. Previn, and lastly, Mr. Barajas. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is what everybody got a free copy of here. It's not free. This is the 20th economic report from the Chamber of Commerce. I understand when you add the salaries, this thing costs a quarter of a million dollars. Don't worry, it was a grant from the city. But it has some, I just got a copy of it, and it's got some juicy details in here. Remember what I said, that show business employment is up in the city as a whole? But now let's look at page 66, Mitch O'Farrell, District 13. Here, where Hollywood is, geographical Hollywood, the birth of motion pictures. What's happening here? Everybody is leaving. Why are they leaving? All the show business, because it's dangerous, because you can get murdered on the street, because it's gang warfare.
Stay on the subject. Stay on the subject.
This, a quote, "A precipitous drop in employment in the motion picture and sound-recording subsector dampened what would otherwise have been solid gains in private employment." If I'm lying, you go to page 66 and you get up here and say that's a lie. Everything's fine in Hollywood. The businesses are up, everything. I'm telling you right now, this entire report is BS, bullshit. This is what you should do with this report, and use this report when you go to the bathroom because--
Stay on the subject. Now you're not on the subject.
I'm telling you, this report, if I say this report is shittable, that is on the report. This report should be used as toilet paper. And I'll leave this speech for you, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you for the gift, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Previn, followed by Mr. Barajas.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from CD2. And could somebody make an arrest in some way, sir? I don't know. I'd be happy to go with the authorities if that's what's necessary. Sir, Access L.A. City Hall has caught my attention. Fantastic. This morning, as I came into the Hollywood Hall, I saw Mr. Englander concluding his moving testimony at the breakfast in the Rotunda, and it is really very touching. What we have here is a robust rollout by the Chamber of Commerce. Now, one of the wrinkles is this glamorous report, which I must say is very, very nice. And I'd like to thank our sponsors, AT&amp;T, NBC Universal. Those are some of my favorites, who have a nicely-positioned employee on the Ethics Commission at the moment. Welcome. Of course, Chevron, and needless to say, Clear Channel Outdoor, who Mr. Krikorian is going to be facilitating a nice city program to put the--
Stay on the subject.
--billboards up on the city property, sir. Don't shut my mic down. Thank you. So regarding CD2, which is my Hollywood district, we have some stats that are worth a quick review. Building permit values, I'm pleased to say, no, sorry, that's the wrong stat. Building perm, anyway, we're doing less building permits than Mr. Blumenfeld, who has a robust program going on over there, so I'm pleased about that. We do have some statistics that are worth noting, and we should be proud of, I guess. The median household income in our section has gone up plus 3.8% compared to the city, which is plus 3.6%, compared to the county, which is only plus 2.9%. So that's worth crowing about briefly. The employed workers, we have increased plus 3.6%, so that's good news. L.A., plus 3.3%, and of course, L.A. County, only plus 2.4%. So once again, a little bit disappointing there. We have a large spike in other services, which is a kind of private employment by industry. I was wondering if that might be in connection with the proliferation of dispensaries that we have in our area that are, of course, of both varieties, but they are everywhere, sir. You can go to the Subway sandwich shop and turn around and whoops, it's this dispensary. So it is very convenient for those who are participating in that program. The retail trade is only up 0.7%.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you, and I think I have Mr. Barajas behind you.
Well, first off, let me just say that it's an interesting way to put a document together, but I think I should just get into the relevant facts of the matter. I think what's going on here, I think that the intention is to cover up the fact that we are still in collapse. One of the ways that I figure that is some of the charts here indicate, for some reason, not the complete picture. You have several districts who are losing jobs, and as the map shows in the end, that pretty much says employment growth by residency pretty much proves the fact that we are still in a collapse, and we do have a lot to make up for. And this is one of the subjects that your facility, EWDD, picks up. So it's a bit of contradiction here. This report, everyone praises, I think it's because it looks good, but the details, the reality is, you could cover up all you want, but the fact is, we are still in a collapse. So no wonder what the figures indicate, whether the chart goes up or it looks like it goes down. I think in terms of progress, it has not increased. I think you still suffer the fact that we have not developed, particularly in this city, a way to support a jobs, if you want to say, growth. I specifically speak on development. So if you could prove to me that you developed this city, then obviously the people who are homeless don't exist.
Okay, that ends a public comment on this item. So, Mr. Tobin, back to you, sir.
Thank you, President Wesson. Well, as you could hear, as you could deduce from some of the comments that you heard, the business community shares your goals of creating jobs, lifting people out of poverty, ensuring a healthy environment, increasing affordable housing, ending homelessness, and providing good public services. And we firmly believe that the path to meet these mutual goals lies with helping existing companies to expand and new companies to locate in our city. As a couple of our speakers noted, the Chamber is much more than an organization that promotes businesses and business-friendly policies. Cash for College was mentioned by Keith Parker. Last year, we ran 120 workshops for high school seniors and their parents, helped them fill out their financial aid forms. 9,000 of those students filled out their financial aid forms, and they received $45 million in financial aid to go to college. And those are the kind of programs that we know we need in our city to prepare our workforce and our young people for the future. We'd like to begin today by sharing with you a set of advocacy priorities that the Chamber believes will help every Angelino and every business in our city. Following that, we'll have Chris Thornburg from Beacon Economics walk you through his report on the economic performance of each of your individual council districts, and we're certainly open to having a private meeting with each of you about your council district with Chris. Let me introduce the other people sitting here this morning. To my immediate right is Bill Caswell, Chair of the Chamber's Board of Directors and Senior Vice President for Operations, Chief Operating Officer for Kaiser Permanente. To my left is Chris Thornburg, the founding partner at Beacon Economics, and to my far right, Ruben Gonzalez, the Chamber's Senior Vice President of Public Policy and Political Affairs. Bill Caswell will start us off with our first priority, and they follow this list that you have in front of you, which is titled "Access L.A. City Hall."
Great. Thank you, Gary, and thank you, Mr. President, for having us here today. We're going to highlight the eight priorities after diligent discussion within the Chamber Board, and we believe the first priority merits its place as the number-one priority, certainly a topic that each and all of you create great focus in your daily work, and that's around to make business growth and job creation the number-one priority. The L.A. Chamber proactively and aggressively extends the welcome mat to new and existing on behalf of the Chamber and all of L.A., the existing businesses that wish to invest in your district and other districts in the city, that you consider the impact on job creation and all of the collective actions you take as a council. Your actions are significant, and regulatory and fiscal impacts on business and jobs make a difference. It is our expectation that the new Ad Hoc Committee on Comprehensive Job Creation Plan will lead the way for city government to help more businesses create more jobs. Now I'll turn over the mic to Gary for our next priority.
So that's staying the course on LAX modernization. As all of you know, LAX is a $60 billion annual economic engine for our region, supports tens of thousands of local jobs, and you had a significant vote as a city council two and a half years ago to put in place a new master plan for LAX, and that master plan is already paying big dividends. The major investments by our airlines and associated businesses at LAX shows the upside that the certainty of the modernization plan that this body approved two and a half years ago is providing to businesses. And of course, we must continue to focus on the construction of light rail and an automated people mover to LAX, both for our air travelers and also for the employees that work at LAX. Ruben will cover our next priority.
Thank you, Gary. Our next priority is to expand and accelerate reduction of the gross receipts tax. As you are well aware, the city of Los Angeles currently has one of the highest business taxes of any city in L.A. County and one of the highest in the nation. Every reduction in the gross receipts tax incentivizes businesses to stay and start up in the city, creating jobs here and generating revenue from property, sales, and utility taxes. The current phasing cut of $45 million from gross receipts tax over three years is a good start to the process. To create additional certainty, we encourage the council to add another three years of $15 million per year cut to make a total six-year, $90 million cut over the next six years.
Bill? Thank you. Our next priority is to ensure the Port of Los Angeles remains competitive. As you all know, the Port of Los Angeles is responsible for hundreds of thousands of jobs and millions in tax revenue throughout the region. The City Council took a critical step to increase the port's competitiveness by approving BNSF's Southern California International Gateway, the SCIG, two and one-half years ago. You have a similar opportunity with the Union Pacific River Road near Dock Project comes your way. By supporting these projects and others, the council can ensure that the Port of Los Angeles is ready to meet the challenge of the Panama Canal expansion and significant competition from other ports. Gary will take our next priority.
And that's to support water supply reliability and ecosystem restoration. There is no greater challenge facing the city of Los Angeles, our region, and the state than ensuring our water supply. The Chamber, along with many others, strongly supported the state water bond that was proposed by Governor Brown last year and passed by the voters. But that was just one step. It's critical that the Chamber and the city of Los Angeles lead the way in supporting the governor's two plans for the San Joaquin Delta. Those two plans are the California Water Fix and the California Eco Restore. These plans are a comprehensive effort to address the chronic water challenges facing both the state water project and the Central Valley project. We need the long-term water fixes that the governor has proposed. The city of Los Angeles should not only be a proponent of Water Fix and Eco Restore, but a leading voice in seeing that those two plans become a reality. Now on the issue of homelessness. As many of you know, in late 2010, the Chamber and the United Way released Home for Good, an action plan to end chronic and veteran homelessness in Los Angeles. Since its loss, Home for Good has inspired a cooperative alliance between federal and local officials, a landmark shift of county resources, and the establishment of a funders' collaborative to leverage public and private funds for homeless housing for maximum results. Thus far, Home for Good has housed 23,000 homeless, of which 14,000 are veterans. But as every one of you know, and everyone in this room knows, the increase in homelessness is growing much faster than our increase in housing. As this council tackles this state of emergency issue, and I applaud you for making it an important issue and a state of emergency, Home for Good, the Chamber and the United Way stands as a willing partner and a resource to share critical lessons that we've learned here in Los Angeles and Los Angeles County and in other cities that we've visited across the nation. Now, Bill, we'll discuss education and workforce development.
Well, perhaps some of you played a role this morning in walking a child to school, so this one will resonate with you, as it does to all of us, to support continued investments in tomorrow's workforce. We've all shared a goal of a strong, educated workforce in Los Angeles. Companies like Kaiser Permanente need employees at every level with the skills to efficiently and effectively get the job done. We encourage you to deepen the city's relationship and shared resources with key stakeholders such as the L.A. Unified School District, Los Angeles Community College District, and the Workforce Investment Board, to leverage collaborative approaches that strengthen the region's labor force. Prioritize investments in higher L.A.'s youth, cash for college, school safety, and gang reduction zones. These are priorities. Support programs for creative internships in high-demand industry sectors such as L.A. High Tech to ensure our students have real-world experiences in industries of the future. Ruben?
Thank you. Now, our final aspect to this agenda is that we ask you to develop an incentive-based strategy to build more affordable and market-based housing in Los Angeles. As Chris Thornburg has told us often and several times from this very table, one of the greatest barriers to growing the economy of our city, our region, and our state is the dreadful lack of housing stock. The demise of community redevelopment tools, the cost of CEQA abuse, and the long planning process in the city of Los Angeles all create an environment where it is hard for affordable housing and market-based housing to pencil out. We need a housing vision that will entice developers to be partners in creating more attainable housing, rather than another regulation that makes it harder for development to be financially feasible. This vision, coupled with reform to the planning process, can kick-start a renaissance in housing development throughout Los Angeles.
Those are our eight priorities that we'd like to share with you today. I thank you, Bill and Ruben. Next, we'd like to go over the report that you have in front of you from Chris Thornburg and Beacon Economics, and he will share a brief summary of our district-by-district report. I believe he has some PowerPoint slides, and once again, we're happy to visit with you individually. We also want to announce, and many of you may know this, that we're going to partner with our city comptroller, Ron Galpern, to put these important economic benchmarks on his website so they can act as a resource for decision-makers and the public throughout the year. You have a hard copy in front of you. I'd like to make special recognition of Tesoro Refining and Marketing, who is the sponsor of this-- of this particular publication.
Chris Thornburg?
Thank you very much, Gary. Council President Wesson, council members, as always, it's an honor to be with you. This is actually the sixth year we've produced this report, and as Gary has mentioned, this report has changed tremendously over the years. You know, I always like to motivate why we do this a little bit. We all are working together to advance this city in terms of the economic prospects of the people who work here, as well as people who live here. Unfortunately, over the years, it's been very hard to get that information, but new data sources and new tools have come available, which allow us to create an unprecedented view, if you will, of the inner workings of the city, right down to the city council district level. This is an advancing technology. I am so proud of this year's report. This is the sixth one we've done, and this is light years ahead of the first one we did, and it's very exciting that we're going to be working with the city control in order to take this to the next level, which is to put it online and make it into a living document, something that's basically updated on a quarterly basis rather than an annual one, and of course, it's going to be there in electronic form rather than just in printed form. What I'm going to do here today is really give you a very brief overview of what's happening out there. Really, I'm going to start very big and go right down to the local districts. We don't have too much time, and I probably will not be able to get through all the information I have in my slide deck today, but the slide deck is for years to peruse as well, and as Gary mentioned, if there's anything we can do for you in terms of helping you better understand these numbers over the coming weeks, I would encourage you to reach out to Gary, and we can set something up.
Chris, don't rush. Just go through this.
Oh, well...
Just go through it. Go ahead.
Don't tell Gary that.
Well, just go through it. We want to hear it.
All right, yes, sir. All right, so here's the very big picture, and I had to start here because, as you know, there's worries about oil, there's worries about China, there's worries about the U.S. dollar, there's worries about the stock market. Put all that to one side, we continue to see a positive outlook for the U.S. economy overall. If you look at the overall numbers, the slow start to this year was offset by a very large second quarter, and we're looking probably for the best year of growth in the U.S. we've seen in a number of years. That's great news for the city, to say the very least, because in the end, where the U.S. economy goes, we all go. Labor markets have clearly turned a corner, the housing market is starting to bounce again. Forget the stock market, there is no asset bubble. Commodity prices being down is ultimately a lift for the U.S. economy, and of course, California, which many folks had written off, is not lagging the U.S. recovery, quite the opposite, we're driving the U.S. economy, we're one of the fastest-growing economies out there today. It doesn't say there aren't headwinds, but none of these headwinds worry us whatsoever. Indeed, we continue to see ongoing expansion in the U.S. economy for at least the next two years. As noted, one of the fastest-growing economies out there right now is indeed California. Now, over the last three years, our state has been tied for the third-fastest-growing in the U.S. right now, faster than Texas, faster than any of these fast, you know, quote-unquote "business-friendly" sort of states, 3% on average. Now, where is that growth? Still heavily, of course, centered in the Bay Area, say, at least San Jose and San Francisco on top of that list, but really, the growth is spread across California. Los Angeles, of course, is one of the slower-growing economies, only about 1.7% job growth from August of last year to August of this particular year. But I keep something in mind, that's still about 73,000 jobs, which is more than any other area of the state, where a large, advanced economy, we tend to grow a little slower in the state overall, that number is still very, very impressive when you put it in that context. And what about the city itself? This is what we're here to talk about, and again, from our perspective, there's very good news when it comes to talking about what's happening here in the city of L.A. These data, of course, are a little bit more lagged, given the nature of how we collect these through the unemployment insurance system, but at least through the third quarter of last year, the numbers show that the city of Los Angeles had hit about 1.35 million private-sector jobs as of the third quarter of 2014. To put that in context, the city now is growing at about a 2-point, was growing at about a 2.7% year-on-year growth rate relative to a little less than 2% for the balance of the county. In other words, the city is actually outperforming the county overall in terms of overall economic growth. Very solid numbers there. As to where the jobs are, a relatively broad mix, as actually Paul Kreutz's district, District 5, had added the most jobs, about 12,000 jobs from Q3 '13 to Q3 '14. One of the fastest-growing sectors in many of these areas, by the way, and careful when you look at that column to the right, because that's growth rate, not in terms of absolute numbers. Interestingly enough, manufacturing, you'll see the number of those up there, there is a new manufacturing starting to emerge in the city itself. It tends to be small, high-tech sort of manufacturing that's driving the show, but very good numbers there. You can see overall that, again, council districts 14, 5, 11, and 4, and, excuse me, my eyes are failing me, 3, tend to be some of the biggest economies out there, with, of course, Jose Uizar's sector being by far and away the largest one that's in downtown area with over 300,000 jobs. Some of the other districts are a little job-light, more residence-based, less job-based, but again, relatively solid growth numbers across most of the city. Only a couple areas look to be down at this particular point in time. One of the things you'll notice in this book is that most of the resident statistics, that is data we get from the American Community Survey, is still from 2013, which is the same as last year. Unfortunately, the census delayed the release of the American Community Survey, and so we weren't able to get those new numbers into the book. We did get those new numbers since then, and I do have some city-level statistics to share for you for 2014. One of the things to keep in mind, one of the nice things about bringing this online is that this document can be living. We can update those data as soon as they become available, and you'll have data as timely as it can be. With that in mind, what has happened on the household front, well, again, very good news. According to the American Community Survey, the unemployment rate in the city has been dropping faster than for the county overall. In fact, in 2014, they re-merged after separating over the course of the Great Recession. Household growth, that is to say, people who live in the city with jobs, that has been growing at a much faster pace than it has, again, for the county overall. About a 6.9% increase in employed residents in the city of Los Angeles compared to about 4.4% for the balance of the county overall. Very solid numbers there over the last two years. If you think about what districts have higher or lower unemployment rates, and there's this ongoing critique always of the fact that the unemployment rate in the city of L.A. is higher than most of the other areas around you, keep in mind, much of that has to do with the demographic base. If you look at, for example, the distribution of unemployment rate across districts, it almost perfectly correlates with the level of education you see in a district-by-district basis. Basically, those districts that have more highly-educated workers are the ones that have the lower unemployment rates. This is a very consistent pattern we see across districts, across cities, across the nation overall, and it goes back to the idea of the importance of making sure our education system is working as best it can, and I want to employ Gary and all that work you're doing to help those kids get those scholarships, to make sure they get the best education they can. Some other good information out there, having to do, for example, with wages, we do have some new wage data coming from the payroll workforce. It's very interesting what's going on out there. As you know, of course, we live in a world where there is growing inequality in terms of incomes, that continues to be the case here. Indeed, some of the biggest pay increases we've seen over, from 2013 to 2014, are in the two most highly-compensated sectors out there, information and financial activities. Average pay in those sectors is above $100,000, and they've seen almost double-digit rates of growth in terms of wages in those industries. But it isn't all bad news. If you go all the way to the bottom end of those, you'll see the two lower end, leisure and hospitality and retail trade, many of those are part-time jobs, and as a result of that, the average wage rate is considerably lower. But look at the numbers, they also are seeing some of the higher growth rates, that is to say, because of the flowering tourism industry and all the activity in restaurants and the hotels going on out there, not only is there more job opportunity for the folks that fill those jobs, but they're also seeing increased rates of pay as well. So very good news on that particular front. Again, as, going back to the American Community Survey data, we do have some new data in terms of household income, about a 4.2% growth in household income from 2013 to 2014. Your median household income in the city is now $50,000, still lower than the county overall, but growing at a faster pace, relatively good news on that front. As for sort of tourism and retail activity itself, again, it's been a relatively flat year in terms of taxable sales, largely because of taxable sales derived by some business and infrastructure sort of activities. However, taking that at one side, we did see a nice bump in the second quarter of this year, and taxable sales receipts in the city are now at an all-time-high level. As for hotels, they continue to be very, very busy, with occupancy rates running close to 80%, over 80% for the area overall, which is a crazy-high number from a national basis. It is true that occupancy rates have kind of peaked out, it's hard to get any more people in those hotels at this particular point in time, but one of the things that's happening is because of that tightness, you're starting to see those daily rates go up as well. So it still means good, from a revenue perspective, good numbers in terms of TOT taxes because those rates are going up. And by the way, the rates are going up faster for hotels within the city than, again, in the balance of the county, showing the strength of the city at this particular point in time. Grocery receipts taxes, again, growing at a very solid basis. Most grocery receipts taxes, again, coming from council districts 14, 5, and 11. One of the interesting statistics I threw in there for you is the grocery receipts tax per job, and it's very interesting to see that actually, Council District 3 has the most grocery receipts tax per job. It gives you a relatively decent idea of where those taxes are coming from on a sector-by-sector basis. As for growth rates, again, most areas have seen increases in grocery receipts taxes, although there's a couple negatives on there, these numbers do tend to bounce around. Commercial permits, again, continue to grow faster here in the city than they do in the county overall. Much better numbers in terms of office, retail has cooled down just a little bit, but number one still is overall alterations on existing structures. You know, we still have a relatively high vacancy rate, certainly in some of the suburban office markets, for example, and I think developers in the city recognize that one of the best ways of using that space, as opposed to building new spaces, is to re, if you will, re-permit or reuse existing space in different sort of ways, and that continues to be a strong driver of overall construction activity in the area. As for the housing market, as Ruben had mentioned, again, very interesting statistics. You're looking at median home prices, for example, continue to rise at a spectacular pace. On the left-hand side, you can see recent numbers suggest the median home price in the city has recently crossed the $650,000 mark, a very, very high number, to say the very least. And something I wanted you to keep in mind, on the right-hand side, again, is 2011 and 2014 data having to do with the share of income being used for housing purposes. And the reason I want you to focus on this is I've broken this up into renters and owners. Over the last few years, there's been a strong emphasis on getting more multifamily units into the city of L.A., which has been incredibly important for workforce housing, as we all know, and it's been very successful. Lots of new multifamily coming on, multifamily units coming online, and that has actually truly reduced the rental burden on many folks who rent in the city itself. Indeed, the share of households that are paying over 30% of their income for rental housing has fallen from 50% of all renters to 40% of all renters, still high, but moving in the right direction. But that's not the case for owned housing. Indeed, the number of, share of households paying over 30% of their income for owned housing still remains at a very high level, 60% within the city in 2011 and today. In other words, when you're thinking about housing policy, multifamily is very important, but it's not the only part of housing we need to be focusing on, and it's also the single-family sector and the owner-occupied housing markets such as condos that's important to be focusing on as well, and on that front, we continue to lag behind. Indeed, if you look at overall residential permits, they were growing very nicely, flattened out just a bit over the last year, predominantly multifamily. Multifamily, lots of new multifamily in the works, single-family is yet to recover from the economic downturn, and I would suggest to council members respectfully that single-family housing is really something to be focusing on as well, from a policy perspective, over the course of the next couple of years. As to where are we seeing the most permits, again, it's kind of a broad range. There's a few permits, 4, 5, 11, and 14 have seen a large number of new permits coming online, lots of new money being spent in those areas for housing. Many other districts are far behind. There are clearly areas in this city that can be developed and should be developed, so we're hoping to see more of that money being spread into new parts of the city as time goes on. On the non-residential side, it's, again, primarily those industrial cores, 14 and 11, that tend to dominate in terms of overall new permits to getting new, new non-resident structures built, or again, fixing up existing non-residential structures over the course of the last couple of years. I don't worry about that slide so much. So how about the districts themselves? You know, what we tried to do here, as opposed to just going through the numbers verbatim, which is what you have in your report right here, I know you're going to want to peruse over these on your own, but we did try to come up with a little bit of a rundown of what's happening with each one of these districts and give you a few of what's going on out there. So what I'm going to do very quickly is kind of give you some of the highlights of what we saw out there. District 1, of course, that's Sadio's district, booming in terms of construction, very large increase in multifamily construction in this district from 2014 to 2015. Again, great news, but we also need to be focusing on single-family stuff. Of course, in Mr. Krikorian's district, which is where I actually happen to live, this is one of the most prosperous districts out there right now. From a payroll perspective, some of the highest compensated workers are in that particular district, and oh, by the way, those numbers are going up very, very rapidly now as well for some of those early trends we just talked about. As for Bob Blumenfeld's district, District 3, lots more jobs, but wages have not been growing as fast as for the city overall. The reason for this, of course, is that this is home to many administrative and support service jobs, you know, temp services have been a new way many businesses are operating, but those temp jobs tend to carry with them lower wages. That's been booming in that particular area, which is why you're getting that particular statistic, but overall, the area is seeing many new jobs. In new council member's Ru's district, of course, this is in that central sort of part of the city right there, this is a growing hub for business, lots of new things happening there. In fact, one of the fastest rates of grocery receipts tax growth we're seeing in the city right now, a really new urban hub for businesses, as the case may be. I'm sorry, I'm getting my paws mixed up here, that last one was Krikorian, this is Mr. Kreutz's district right here. This is, of course, again, one of the more highly skilled and highly-paid districts out there in that particular area. You can see in particular information of financial service jobs, top of the list here from an income perspective, indeed, average workers in this district are making close to $200,000 in the information sector, so very, very solid numbers in that particular district. As for Ms. Martinez's district, this, if you build it, this is where you're going to get your workers from, almost 18% of all, I'm sorry, excuse me, 17% of all construction workers in the city work out of this particular zone. Of course, construction is booming in the city, and as a result of that, very solid numbers up in District 6 in terms of overall job growth. District 7 is actually seeing a nice growth in some high-tech manufacturing, that's one of the centers of Silicon Beach, as the case may be, although it's nowhere near the beach, as it turns out. But nevertheless, high-tech manufacturing seems to be flowering in this particular district. As for District 8, as we know, one of the lower-income districts in the area, one of the bigger uphill struggles the city is facing right now, but nevertheless, we see, of course, a rising tide lifting all boats, and we're expecting better numbers to be coming out of here over the next few years because of the growth trends we've been seeing. As for District 9, this is, of course, becoming one of the younger and hipper districts out there right now. Amazing new flowering of restaurants and various sorts of places that people are going to at this particular point in time, leisure and hospitality, one of the fastest-growth areas out there right now. And of course, home also, too, you think of that convention center, Staples Center, not too long ago, was at one of the presentations on what they're going to be doing with the convention center, very exciting stuff there. District 10, lots of new jobs, but again, another one where you're seeing a pay coming down just a little bit, largely, again, because food service and drinking places tend to be one of the fastest-growing sectors in that particular area, those tend to carry a little bit lower pay on a take-home basis. The good news there is there's a lot of tip income attached to those jobs, it tends not to get reported in these official statistics, to say the least. District 11, of course, again, one of the more high-educated, high-earning sectors, to say the very least, continuing to do very well in terms of one of the highest median household incomes, very high-end desirable area. I am told also it has one of the greatest collections of superhero figurines around the city right now as well, so... As for District 12, again, this is going to be becoming one of the manufacturing hubs in the area, manufacturing should all be on our minds. Not a big employment driver, but keep in mind that the manufacturing is still flowering in the city, largely because of advances in technology. So you're seeing small gains in manufacturing jobs, that means big gains in overall economic manufacturing activity. Again, very good news for the city, this sector continues to do well. As for District 13, this is all about, of course, if you will, the movie industry sector flowering in this particular area. Some other parts of the city, actually, you've seen some retraction in MOPIC. Overall, motion pictures are nice and steady in terms of employment in the city and the county overall, and this is one of the places where we're actually growing at a fairly sizable basis. Coming to District 14, again, this is all about non-residential activity, we already mentioned that, big gains there in terms of lots of new investment in the downtown renaissance, as the case may be, and last but not least, getting all the way down there to the ports, of course, Joe's district, as we know, lots of new activity going on around the port and exciting things happening there. I know a lot of folks view the Panama Canal as a threat because of the potential for imports from Asia to go around us, but I would point out, it's also an opportunity to bring all sorts of imports directly from Europe, which is another one of our big trading partners often forgotten about, and so we, again, see very good things happening down that port area, and of course, that transportation industry is doing wonderful down there at this particular point in time. Well, again, this is a very brief oversight, you're going to have the book in front of you, lots of data to be pouring over the course of the next few weeks, and as noted, of course, we're going to be working with the city controller in the chamber to be pulling this into an online format. Again, they gave me a couple screenshots of what's going to be going live over the course of the next couple of weeks, and I wanted to show those to you. This is going to be a picture of the front page, the ability to kind of click on any number of statistics that you might be interested in understanding what's happening in the city of L.A. at any particular point in time, and when you click on one of these things, it's going to give you the kind of sub-regional breakdown. You'll see the map, you'll see the individual statistics, and again, we'll be updating these on a regular basis and even creating some current cast to give you a better sense of what's happening in the employment in your district in a more current form. So, there it is. Thank you very much for your attention. Again, I hope you enjoy the statistics, this is for you to use, because if you can't measure it, it's hard to tell how well you're doing. doing. And so that's what this is all about. Thank you very much. And Gary?
Chris, we want to thank you as well, and especially making sure that now everyone knows where the superhero figurines are located. Mr. Tobin?
We are open for any questions that you might have, but that's up to your discretion, Mr. President.
Let us begin. Well, I will say this. We are excited about this partnership. We take the creation of the Ad-Hoc Committees on Creating Jobs very seriously. I think Mr. Krikorian has really led us out of the gate with a very structured approach. So I'm very optimistic that we'll be successful. And again, thank you for the partnership. I also anticipate that Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Wizar may want a presentation where it relates to your efforts on homelessness in front of their committee. So I'm seeing just all kinds of areas where we can partner moving forward. With that said, I'm going to go to Mr. Kretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you not only for the usual excellent product here, but for your set of goals, because this, I think, is potentially the most collaborative set of goals we've seen. I think we can all agree on this. I think we can all work toward it and help us make not only a great city, but a great business community as well. So I appreciate that. Personally, in my district, it looks like most of the news is good, but gross receipts actually went down. What do you think the reason is for that? And how can we turn that around in CD5?
But, you know, one of the things about the grocery receipts taxes is, so when we put this together, we have to use a variety of data from a variety of sources. And some of this data is confidential by nature. For example, the employment data is confidential. We work with the, who's our?
Climate Development.
Yeah, anyway. But we work with the mayor's office in order to get access to that data. In terms of the grocery receipts, yeah, thank you. In terms of the actual grocery receipts, we're not privy to those numbers. Rather, we work with the Department of Finance within the city to get those numbers. They send us business addresses, we geocode, send it back to them. The idea, a lot of this report, again, is to give you the ground-level information. The idea now is if you know the grocery receipts tax are falling, you want to know why, reach out to the Department of Finance folks, and they'll better help you figure that out.
Okay. And I know you have a certain amount of focus on sustainability in this also, which is very exciting. What does the chamber's take on climate change? And how can the business community do more while taking advantage of that to create more jobs?
Well, we think that the advance of a lot of different technologies is going to address that. We have not been a proponent of simply passing laws to say thou shalt use less oil and diesel fuel. But we believe that it's in the natural best interest of companies to conserve utilities. And there will still be lots of people who are going to need to use fossil fuels. But we're not going, we believe that technology will probably, over time, reduce the amount of use by individual businesses of fossil fuels.
Thank you. And one last question. On the development process, the city in recent years has been trying to streamline the process to some degree, and I think we've made some headway. Where do you think we are on that? And how far do we still have to go? And how should we be trying to get there?
You have made some progress. We still have a ways, we still have a ways to go. I heard the mayor give a major speech to the Business Industry Association about two months ago, and he outlined his plan for reform in streamlining in both the building and safety and planning and other locations. But we're not there yet. But if you would add your incentive, along with the mayor's, to every staff person who works in any department that is related to construction, and tell them that you really value speed and moving things forward, and that you will stand behind them and help them, because sometimes they are risk averse. And they need to know that you have their back if they try to move the process along quickly.
Whatever way we can get that message across, I look forward to working with you on helping make that happen. And I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I think we're all focused on trying to make that process work better. So I hope we can all work together on that in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz. Mr. Englander?
Thank you very much. This is new and improved, so really done a much deeper dive, and I really appreciate it. I mean, the information, I look at this continuously, I keep this in my office throughout the year, and do deeper dives as we overlay and get updates. And this is very helpful to know that, just looking at my district, private employment grew. There's, as you mentioned, an increase in manufacturing employment, which is great considering there's a decline citywide in that, which is unfortunate. But the retail trade industry also grew significantly. The housing market grew. I thought it was interesting that incomes in the district grew, and now almost 38% greater than the median household income in the city. So this is really fascinating information. One of the things you went through in the beginning as well, and I think it's very helpful, all the slides in the beginning were in the book. Is that a separate?
Again, the, so.
We'll make those available.
Yeah, we'll make the slides available to you, for sure. That's not any issue at all. And again, and now that we're working with the controller to get this online, we'll be, for example, updating the demographic statistics that come from residents or survey, the American Community Survey data. We'll get the 2014 rolled up and get that online and available to you, so you have even more recent numbers than the 2013 statistics in there.
And will we be able to, once they're online, drill down into deeper layers of these?
You should be. We continue to work with the controller's office to set this thing up, and there's been a lot of back and forth, to say the least. There's a whole lot of data. And more often than not, the controller's been fantastic, by the way. His staff has been great helping us pour over all this data to make sure everything makes sense and lines up. You know, in the end, these are still statistics, and so we all have to be a little careful about how they jump around. But the best you got, simple as that.
Thank you.
Mr. Bob Blumentfeld?
Well, I just wanted to add my voice to the echo of gratitude. This is great. I mean, as you said, they've gotten better each year, and this one is, I think, taking an extra quantum leap. So I want to thank all of you for putting it together. This really adds to the dialogue of the city. I mean, all of us here are committed to being more data-driven and trying to make policy decisions based on the facts and based on what's actually happening. And so these are great benchmarks. For me, in my district, I see the linkage. You know, I know with the Warner Center Open for Business Initiative, we've been pushing the receipt arising effort. We've been pushing that we've been growing jobs in the West Valley, and it's reflected here. So it's good to see, to sync up the anecdotal of what you see in your district with the hard numbers. I'm curious about, and I know we can continue to collaborate in a good way. So the city is, it's also a very good report card for the city in many ways, in terms of our economy. And we're doing surprisingly, to some extent, better than the county on almost, you know, the county at large on almost every measure. What policy, you know, what are we doing right in terms of policy that the county at large is not doing, that we should either continue to do or double down on, that you see is helping make this
You want me to jump on that?
I always start shuddering when people ask Chris policy questions. Go ahead.
There's a couple of things I think you want to keep in mind, that the economic statistics that you see on a day-to-day basis can be, if you will, moved by policy, but policy is not the sole driver of economic growth by any stretch of the imagination. It's a rudder on the ship, and there's winds, and there's currents, and all sorts, and waves, and all sorts of other forces out there. One of the things I think that is really giving the city a boost is what I would call the return to urbanization. As you know, there is this growing push for a live-work-play sort of environment. And I think you see people kind of coming back into the center, coming back into the urban area, kind of leaving, if you will, the burbs, what's considered to be farther away. And I'm certainly, that's certainly part of what's lifting everything. There's no doubt about it. But the second part of it is this housing policy. The fact that there's a lot of new housing coming online, particularly in certain areas. And as you know, as was noted, one of my constant worries is a lack of housing. Well, because of the lack of housing, when you're building housing and you're bringing people in, when that housing's available, that's also an enormous driver of overall economic growth. So from a policy perspective, I'm not sure what policy I would point at. But clearly, being amenable to growth, working with people who want to build, to fix things up, and as Gary said, making sure that the people in the building services know that, you know, this is good stuff to be doing. I think that's probably one of the biggest things you can do.
Cities themselves have not been as popular as a place to live in the last five decades as they are today. People are actually searching out urban living opportunities. And while they have less children than they used to have, and there's a lot of other different demographics, when you look at cities across the United States, you will find that they are doing much better than they did 20 or 30 years ago, when it seemed like all the migration was to the suburbs.
And some of that may be policy-driven, too. Certainly, my area, the Warner Center plan is the live-work-play, pedestrian-friendly. It's about creating a safe environment for folks with police and to make that happen. Anyway, I love all the stats, and the more, and I like the idea, even though I know you're weary or wary of linking policies with outcomes, certainly at least when it's on the positive side. But what I'd like to see is how we do that, because that really helps us, you know, drive our decision-making. And again, I want to thank you and appreciate what you're saying here and what you put together. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Great work, as always. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, all of you from the chamber, for giving us this tool to begin working with. And I especially appreciate that the first sentence of your statement about your first priority was your expression of optimism in our jobs committee. Thank you. I also share that optimism. And I want to thank the council president for putting the council's focus on this issue. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you in the committee. I think, you know, as always, one of the things that this report does is it shows some of the challenges that we faced over the last more than a half decade now. The first thing that jumps out to me on this is that this year is the first time since before the global economic collapse seven years ago, that Los Angeles is back to its pre-recession highs in total employment. So for seven years, we've been in deficit since the collapse, and we're only now coming back. So it's been a long, hard struggle. But the great news in this is what Mr. Blumentfeld just pointed out. In almost every measure, the city of Los Angeles is beating the county as a whole. The county of Los Angeles is beating the Southern California region as a whole. And California is leading the nation, as you pointed out, in economic recovery. These are great reasons to be optimistic. And on a side note, we will talk further about tax relief in the course of the Ad-Hoc Committee's work. I think that the suggestion that you've put forward here of continuing progress in that regard is an important one. I hope that it'll be targeted in those areas where it can have the most job-creating impact. And I think that our comparison with the county's data is instructive, because, as we've discussed many times, Mr. Thornburg, the county as a whole has a much lower gross receipts tax burden than the city of Los Angeles does, right?
It varies, yes, but for the most part, yes.
And yet, we see that our progress is beating the county in every respect. So clearly, there are certain industries and certain businesses for whom the tax burden is an essential issue. There are many others for which it is not. And I think if we focus our efforts in trying to have the most impact for our investment of tax relief, that's going to be critical in creating new jobs. The other thing I think that we see in this, and that I really appreciate your continuing focus on homelessness, this is a tale of two cities. And we see cranes in the air, we see tremendous economic progress, we see businesses increasing in their gross receipts and in their number here in Los Angeles. And yet, we see spiking homelessness, we see spiking disparity in wages. And I think we need to focus a lot of our attention, the business community, as well as we in the public sector, on job creation and preservation across all income spectrums, not just in the high-wage area. We need to continue to make sure that we pay a livable wage in Los Angeles and that we drive down housing costs. Those are the three things that I think are going to be imperative to trying to avoid that tearing of our social fabric. But there's one other factor that hasn't really been discussed in this, and that's transportation investment. You mentioned the port, you mentioned the airport. But we have, Mr. Bond and I, of course, sit on the MTA board. We have before, right now, the county of Los Angeles is building five rail lines right now. No other region in America is making this kind of an investment in our future. But we need to do much more. And I think that it's essential to the business community, it's essential to the affordability of housing, it's essential to our workforce, that we have a usable transit system. And all of those things are going to be dependent upon the passage of the next sales tax measure, R2, that will be coming before you. And I hope that we'll have broad support within the business community for that measure, because it's imperative. Couple of quick questions, if I may. I think I'm running over. I'm sorry, Mr. President. Number one, just for clarification, Chris, so that I understand this. The jobs numbers that you have in here are based on the place of employment, not the place of residence, right?
Well, I have both kinds of numbers in here, as the case may be.
Well, I was going to distinguish between jobs gross numbers and employment rate numbers.
Right. Yeah, anything you see that says like private employment by industry, that is indeed payroll numbers, and that's based on the unemployment insurance records, which is where you're working. When we start talking about, for example, having to do with a median household income or household employment, that's based on where you live, and that comes from an American Community Survey. There's also one other important difference between these two numbers, too. You will only show up in our payroll numbers if you're actually covered by unemployment insurance. The self-employed, people who are working, shall we say, under the table, there are not going to be condos statistics. And there is a sizable gap, if you will, between household employment and payroll employment within the entire county, because there are lots of people who fall outside the realm of unemployment insurance.
Right. And the reason that I point to that distinction in the gathering of the data is because we have constituents who may be working in a business in Burbank. Our constituents are benefiting from that economic activity. Conversely, Burbank residents are coming into my district to work in the jobs that you're listing as jobs here. My constituents are not necessarily directly benefiting from those. So we have to keep that in mind.
Last question.
Okay. And the final question is, can you please speak to the significance of the uptick in film and television production jobs, largely due to the state incentive, and how that has affected, not just you, but all of you as a panel, how that's affected the business sector generally? And then related to that, does anything in this report suggest industries that we should be focusing our policymaking in particular, to take advantage of the inherent advantages that we have in Southern California, targeted industries where we ought to be devoting our policymaking, our tax relief, and other things, to try to encourage continued growth in those selected industries?
I'll respond to the first part of your question. The new tax incentive plan was like sending a valentine to your sweetheart. It was important to tell that industry that we appreciate them, we love them, and we want them to stay. And while there could be lots of arguments about movie stars make too much money or anything like that, the bottom line was, we were being beat up by other states who were sending valentines. So we made a difference. I'll let Chris answer the second part of your question.
As an economist, I tend to shy away from industry picking. I am a believer that if you provide general incentives, tax relief, ease of regulations, being able to permit things rapidly, build it and they will come, transportation, that sort of thing. So, you know, that is sort of one of the things I pay attention to. But if I had to take a step back and say, well, okay, let's take my economist hat off and just think about what off and just think about what's happening in the area." Look, tourism's on fire. We know tech folks are starting to look at LA as the real deal, there's lots of new investment there. And I think focusing on some of those emerging manufacturing sectors are also very interesting. LA is not a manufacturing hub, the areas around it are, but there are sections of LA that clearly are doing very well, and inasmuch as you can attach, there's lots of secondary benefits to having those companies around here as well. In general, when you're thinking about employment sectors, remember, there's what we call internal and external jobs. Internal jobs service the local population, as long as there's people here making money, those sectors are going to be here. That would be, you know, supermarkets and chiropractors and various sorts of doctors. The external jobs are the ones that sell goods and services to people outside the region. And ultimately, those are the sectors that are going to drive you forward. So, you really want to focus on those external sectors, and the three I just mentioned are those sectors. Thank you.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to thank you gentlemen for the report and for the unique role that the Chamber plays supporting large businesses and small businesses. And, you know, it doesn't matter, you know, if the issue is the gross receipts, or the minimum wage, or homelessness, or education issues, we can always count on the Chamber to provide a unique perspective, and certainly has been, I think, helpful in our deliberations. And this document, of course, is always a real treat, with information we knew and sometimes information we didn't know about. And in my area, I was just curious, you indicate that consumer spending is up $16.9 million, and I guess that's referenced primarily to sales tax receipts, but is that largely from the LA Live campus? How are you, where do you think all that is coming from?
Yeah, again, I'm going to have to do a little bit of a dodge on that, because we unfortunately don't get a breakdown of those numbers. That, again, is confidential statistics. But from my understanding of your area, as the case may be, it's absolutely Downtown Live. You know that place is on fire, it's hopping. I had family in town last Christmas, and I did something I never would have done five or six years ago, which is I took them to Downtown Live, and I couldn't find parking. It was so busy down there. The place is hopping. Yeah, it was crazy, it's crazy. And I'm sure that bringing those people down, creating that entertainment zone, that's candidly going seven days a week, that's pushing numbers up big time.
Well, it is, and it's an exciting development. Our challenge, of course, is seeing how we can leverage that, and how we can attract activities through other parts of the district, other parts of the city.
Yeah.
And so, again, we just appreciate your thoughts on this, your ideas, look forward to working collaboratively with the Chamber as we try to figure out how we use all the, a variety of tools in our toolbox to improve the economy, create jobs, and create the kind of community that we can live, work, and play in. Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Bonin to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank all of you for the presentation and for the hard work. I echo what everybody has said about how much more thorough and helpful this is this year. I particularly appreciated Chris's comments about how our policy actions are a mere rudder against the bigger forces of nature. And I'll remember to have that as a disclaimer next time Ruben comes to warn us about something we're considering doing. The, I was really fascinated—
I'm going to get a lot of abuse about this later on, just—
No, I'm very, very appreciative. There's so much good news in this, I'm going to ask a question that I asked, I think, last year when you did this. So much good news in this about what's happening in Los Angeles, about what's good about the Los Angeles economy. So often, the interactions between the LA City Council and the Chamber is when we're doing something and someone's testifying here, and we don't hear how you pitch Los Angeles to someone who's considering doing business here. So, in light of all of this good news, how would you say that you pitch, how would you pitch Los Angeles to a company that's thinking of moving here or starting business here?
It would certainly depend. You always determine your audience first. And the area that LA has the biggest advantage right now is in technology-related companies. We know we have some really talented people who live here, and the average technology business, with the exception of the gross receipts tax, which we've had some technology companies leave as a result of the gross receipts tax, but with the exception of that, most of the other policies that you have are not of major influence to them. They need to hire the smartest people who want to live in a location where they can go enjoy the weather and the ocean and the mountains, and those are the kind of people that we attract and that we have the best chance of attracting in the future. So, those are the best. It's harder in some other industries if there are lots of hoops that they have to jump through, and the more hoops they have to jump through, the more times you'll hear Ruben and me say, "You've got to find a way to streamline some of these actions that City Hall has to take in order to allow a company to operate."
Okay. I'm trying to get a sense, though, of, that sounds like, well, the LA City Council and their policies, they're not that bad. I'm trying to get a sense of how really we pitch Los Angeles as a place that's good to do business. I'm eager to hear that message.
Actually, first and foremost, we pitch Los Angeles as a good place to live, because that is, that's the difference today for particularly a lot of young people. They first want to know where they can live and how they enjoy themselves, and secondly, then, they want to know where they work. And so, I mean, there are so many assets that you've all told your friends about, Los Angeles as a place to live. And that's why people and some companies want to move here.
Okay, sure. Ruben?
If I would add, you know, I've been working, started working in a cubicle next to Councilman Bonin, almost 20 years ago. And what I say to businesses about this city council and about the city of LA right now is, as an individual business, as an individual transaction of moving here or starting here, we have partners on this council in these offices where we can sit down and talk about the specifics of your business, the specifics of the transaction, and how can we create an environment for you to come and be successful? And so, I can say that to them, I can talk about our great universities that are going to have, you know, a great, well-educated folks that they can reach out to, and all the wonderful things about Los Angeles. I mean, when we come here, when I come here, and, you know, we often tease each other and say, "These are the unintended consequences, are the potential negative impacts of an action you're taking," often, we're talking about macro situations. But again, my positive as far as selling the policy infrastructure of the city is, if you are a business looking to do business in LA, then let's talk about your needs, let's talk about what it takes to get you here, and let's go call Councilman Fill-in-the-Blink or Councilwoman Fill-in-the-Blink and say, "What can we do to get you a home in Los Angeles and make it, in the end, pencil out for you to be successful here?" That would be how I would sell.
Thanks, I'm over on my time. Just let me just say, I wanted to echo a lot of what Mr. Krikorian was saying earlier about R2 and about homelessness. And I want to thank the Chamber for its work on transportation and on homelessness. I was actually surprised that the R2 discussion didn't come up more, particularly given how central the Chamber was in getting the first measure R passed and the business community was. And it's really, I think, absolutely essential to keep these numbers looking as good next time around. On homelessness, I think the Chamber deserves credit for really taking the lead before the rest of us did. And I'm looking forward, as the council and the county work together, and the mayor, to work on that. I would encourage, though, that we need to expand the circle of the conversation beyond chronic homelessness, because so many of the folks who are homeless in Los Angeles have recently become homeless, and more people become homeless every month. And by focusing exclusively on chronic homelessness, we're essentially telling people, "You haven't been homeless long enough, or you're not desperate enough yet." And we need to help people sooner, because that will prevent our numbers from continuing to grow up. And I think that's an area where all of us, the Chamber, Home for Good, the county, city, the mayor, can all work together more to try to get a handle on this, and I look forward to working with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. And also, if you do that, I think it reduces the number, and then you can take more resources and use it for those that are chronically. So, I appreciate your creative thought. Thank you. I thought this was an excellent conversation that we've had today. Again, I really appreciate all of the work that you've done, and from a personal level, it's good to see you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Fuentes.
Can we consider, reconsider item 1W, today's agenda, and ask for two weeks if it's successful?
Vote on reconsideration, 1W. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Oh, we have not voted on it, so you just want to continue it for—
Yeah, two weeks.
Two weeks, so that will put us at the 21st again, October 21st. All right, let's move on. Mr. Bonin, do you want to deal with, I think it's item 26? We held that, or someone held that item for you.
Which is item 26?
Was 26, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is a resolution from the city council to support a piece of legislation by Senator Feinstein and Representative Lou that would give the Veterans Administration the authority to do enhanced use leases to build supportive housing and services for homeless veterans on the VA campus. For generations, we have had this huge and enormous veterans property in West LA, unincorporated county property nestled between my district and Mr. Coretza's district, and it has tragically gone unused for the benefit of veterans. And this legislation from Senator Feinstein and Representative Lou is absolutely crucial for the VA to be able to realize the master plan they're engaged in, which will give us tremendous opportunity to house thousands of homeless veterans here in Los Angeles, and to make sure that that property, which was deeded for veterans' purposes, is used for medical services, recreational opportunities, housing, and more for all those who have done so much, men and women who've served our country. So, it's very important for the city to be on record in favor of this legislation. I ask for an aye vote.
Thank you. Sergeants, can we get some quiet, close those doors? Okay, Mr., shh. Mr. Krikorian, did you want to speak? Or Mr. Price?
And in support of this, last night, we had a meeting at the Estelle Van Meter Center in the district on the plans for renovation of the campus site there. And it's going to be an exciting opportunity, provides some resources for veterans that they should have been receiving. But it looks like plans aren't moving forward now, and I think the legislation by Senator Feinstein is going to be important that we support for all the reasons mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. On this item, members, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
This public, Mr. Previn, you are disrupting this meeting. You are not in charge as to how this meeting is run. Public comment was satisfied. So, that will move on now to item 20. And on that item, I have Mr. Murphy. I have, no, you're disrupting the meeting. Mr. Murphy, we're on item 20.
Yes, item 20, it's another one I support.
Okay, item 20, Mr. Previn, followed by Mr. Spindler. Item 20.
Item 20, you're disrupting the meeting.
Item 20, please come forward.
Yes, hello, Council President Weston, it's Eric Previn. Item 20 is fantastic. It's like 18 and 19, it's in Bonin's district, CD 11, and if I got it correct, this is some kind of a, I think we're making some easements available, this is over at Westgate and Santa Monica Boulevard. This is a very nice item. But sir, item 26 was a—
No, you're off the item. Thank you. Mr. Spindler, do you want to speak on this issue?
You got to do it the right way, stay on the subject. Go ahead, Ms. Pig.
Fucking categorical exemption to the fucking communication from the city fucking engineer relative to a fucking offer to dedicate set easements for street and alley purposes on Westgate Avenue, southeast of Santa Monica Boulevard, southeast of Santa Monica Boulevard, on the alley northeast of Westgate Avenue.
Recommendations for council action.
Find the fucking offer to dedicate the fucking easements for the fucking street and the fucking alley purposes on fucking Westgate Avenue, fucking southeast of Santa Monica fucking Boulevard, on the alley southeast of Santa Monica fucking Boulevard, on the fucking alley northeast of the cocksucking Westgate Avenue, right of fucking way, number 3 fucking 006, 209 fucking 2, is categorically cocksucking exempt from the fucking California Environmental Fucking Quality Act of 19 fucking 70 pursuant to Article fucking 3, Class 5 fucking 19 of the city's cocksucking no-good fucking environmental guidelines. Accept the petitioner's fucking offer to dedicate the motherfucking dedicated cocksucking easements for street and alley purposes on the motherfucking Westgate Avenue, south of Santa Monica fucking Boulevard, and the cocksucker alley, motherfucking southeast of Santa Monica Boulevard, in the fucking ghetto, no streets of Westgate Avenue, fucking depicted on the no-good motherfucking exhibit, meh, 22nd September 19, 2015, city engineer, report to the fucking council. Authorize Kevin James faggot and board of public work cocksuckers to acquire the fucking faggot easement to the motherfucking street and alley purposes. Yay! And no fucking impact statements are submitted, and I don't like it, but I don't give a shit. $3,884. Thank you, and fuck off.
Yeah, well, at least you were able to demonstrate the extent of your vocabulary and just how much class you do not have. Okay, let us prepare to vote, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, let's move on to item 1. In fact, what do we have left that hasn't been, I can call Mr. Previn, he wants to speak on a variety of items, I'm sure one of those is—
I'm sure you're waiting for—
No, he's, wait a minute, Mr. Previn, come forward. Mr. Walsh, come forward. Juanacala?
Right here. What do you want with me?
No, let's just speak, you guys are disrupting the meeting.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org, anybody but England there for supervisor?
No, you're not on the subject.
Oh, we're on number 1?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not important.
Okay, Mr. Previn, I think you're next.
Sir, I'm very disappointed in item number 1, and I don't want to play these games. I really would like to speak on, you know, there's a bunch of CD 4 items I noticed—
Okay, thank you, you're off the subject again. No, you speak to the subject. No, 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 I'm not going to go with this, I'm not going to go through this. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, they have, let me just count for, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, it's about 7. CD 2, my group, which I callied up earlier, has approximately 4, and Professor Krikorian moved one off to the side from yesterday, if I understood it, because they're going to bring it back in a couple of weeks. So, what this is, once again, is the Department of Building and Safety and various other departments are pinging people with various onerous things, and then, we're going into the files, apparently, we've learned, and finding old ones that have already been settled. So, then, the members of the public have to come down, and as we see in a regular kind of presentation, although today it was skillfully pushed to the very end, so that whole cluster of very, it's, yesterday, by the way, you had double A X or something, it really got into the multiple deck, I mean, sort of 30 or 40 of them on the agenda. So, I think we could do a little bit better on this. We never get to hear any of the facts, we never, all we hear is people complaining and you all ignoring it. I don't know, I think we could do a little better. And I would like it if you would allow people to speak on items that they do have interest in speaking on, sir, and that's why I've raised that with you a number of times, and with your council, who are all excellent leaders, who are focused on trying to help. But you have to listen to the public, sir, and I do appreciate your permitting me to go off-point here, but I want you to listen, not just let me go off-point, so thank you.
Mr. Carla.
Well, as always, you hit me right in the heart when you talk about these liens, because on the— Because on the one hand, you speak about ending homelessness. On the other one, you are creating homelessness by putting liens on people and selling their houses from under them. Lean for $29,352? Where is that poor idiot going to get the money to pay you? Lean for $391? Ah, that's okay. That's a little old lady that doesn't even make money for social security. She can ask the neighbors to borrow a little money to pay your lean. And lean for $1,242? That poor idiot has a part-time job and can only, you know, pay maybe 20 bucks. And why should he pay? Just because the city goes down there and says, "You're not in compliance"? What a bunch, that's a, this is a bullshit system. Lean for $3,962? Come on, dude. Do you guys make that much money? I don't think you even do. Lean for $2,574? Man, I haven't even gone through one page of liens. And you're telling us you want to end homelessness? Fuck you! You want to create more homelessness. You know? Nobody's going to respect you, motherfuckers.
Good morning, Mr. President. Yeah, the reason I come in is that I don't know why I got a bill for $510.58 to my address. I don't know why.
Could you, let's see, which is the councilperson in that area? Is that...
4207 Sunset Drive.
You, Mr. Rue's office? You want to... Okay, we'll hold your item. I'm going to have you speak with a representative from the, right over it, that way.
Again, apologize for the mouth on the pig. I'm trying to teach her to speak. So you have all of these liens. Now David Rue has a chance to give amnesty to one of his constituents. He won't even go over and personally talk with this gentleman who very patiently waited all afternoon to sit through the 2015 Chamber of Bullshit Commerce Report. Because this is the Chamber of Commerce Report, and that's good. He's in the right, see, he don't go over.
No, stay on the subject.
See, you guys don't talk to your constituents. There's no communication level on a personal level. That's why a lot of these...
You're not on the subject.
That's why a lot of these people with these liens can't get them paid. They try to get help. They dial 311. You got to dial your councilman. You got to come in and you got to talk to your councilman and know which district you're in and make sure that the property's in that district to get the lien papers. The lien has to be satisfied. You have to get a satisfaction of judgment or acquittal of the lien, and it needs to be recorded. Until it's recorded, it keeps recording interest. And then you go and you refire your house, and a $500 lien turns into $50,000 before you know it. That's how my father lost his first company in 1973, through a fucking Jew that did that in a lien. So you have to make sure that you satisfy your liens, you have your paperwork of your satisfaction, and you record it in the county recorder's office. Even if you don't have the papers, you can make a statement of nonliability, record it. Because when that lien comes up on that refire, that sale, or you die and your relatives are in probate, you could lose everything. So this city is engaged in lien fraud and abuse. A lot of these people pay these liens, Mr. Rue. And you have to stop this. If these people paid it, give them a satisfaction and let them record it.
Thank you. Okay, what I'm going to do, Mr. Rue, I'm not going to act on, on one, what is it? 1V? 1V until, well, let's just, let's just let them continue to talk. So we're going to vote on everything except for 1V. And then you are, you want to continue it for a couple of weeks? October 21st. All right, let's vote on what the remaining, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That brings us, I believe, to general public comment. Oscar Mohammed, come forward, Oscar. And I think it's a Merle Goodman, come up, followed by Sean. Mr. Mohammed, come on.
Yes, I'm Oscar Mohammed. I speak for the oppressed, I speak for the struggling poor, and I speak for culture change. But I was looking at the USA Today newspaper, October 1st. And the USA Today newspaper said that over half the peoples in America would vote, would support, would back a Muslim president. We going near that date. But we should let each race address their own issue. The black race should address their issue, and the other race should address their own concern. But we have problems today with the homeless downtown Los Angeles. Maybe it should be ideal if we remove the homeless from downtown Los Angeles and put them in a field up in Bakerfield and put them in tents. Because we see where the sheriff in Arizona got their inmates living in tents. But anyway, that environment is no conducive, is very immoral, though. And we should look at the mayor of Los Angeles, he live in Beverly Hills, and the people he have authority over, the black people in downtown Los Angeles, is living and dying on the streets of Skid Row.
Thank you. What, Merle Goodman? Please come forward, followed by Sean Murphy.
Good morning, council members and president. I begin my talk with a quote, "A crime buried without justice is never laid to rest." On September 22 of 2014, I was both beaten by the bus driver and had my elbow broken by the police within less than an hour. It all started by my boarding the metro bus. The bus driver had some strong negativity when I got on. And since I did not respond to it, she put her hands on me in a kind of push. I responded by putting my hands on her in self-defense. She immediately began to beat me from head to toe, including...
Thank you. Thank you. Everybody gets a minute, and your minute is done. So we appreciate you coming in. Mr. Murphy? Come on. Followed by Brian Barajas and Eric Previn. Go ahead, Sean.
I'd like my councilman to please, somebody told me about Starbucks being open on Friday. I don't think so. I need to hear from my councilman Krikorian when Starbucks is going to open. They can call me at my home phone number. They got the number.
Thank you. Okay, the next, please. So I guess that would be Brian, Mr. Previn, and Mr. Walsh.
I turned in a leaflet, LaRouche mobilizes to shut down Wall Street as banker streak. The system is cracking. I think in overall, what's happened here, I think I should say that it was, for me, it seemed to be pretty obvious from the point of the agencies that wanted you to accept or adopt a measure that would save your city, it just seems for me that, it just seems that they get this weird vibe on your end that you're not listening. Which is weird, because I think, I think now we have come to a point of view that, that the intention of genocide is very clear. I promoted, you know, speed trains, desalination, which the county seems to be adopting, but you guys, the Glass Stigos, shutting down Wall Street is necessary.
Thank you, Brian. So Mr. Previn, or whoever's closer, you or Mr. Walsh?
Yes, sir, it's Eric Previn. I'd like two minutes if possible. And I'd like to say, Mr. Coretts, you have one of the most educated districts, CD 5, so that is quite impressive. So thank you for that. Today's Chamber of Commerce report was fascinating. I will say, the statistics were not particularly solid, as we learned, because even as you asked some questions, they said, "Well, we don't want to hold you to any of that. Let's not go..." The New York Times had an article today about self-evaluation in government and how it doesn't work as well as outside evaluation. So though this is a little different, Mr. Galbraith does work with all of you. You know, what they found in India, that people who were not complying with environmental laws, when they were auditing themselves, it was just rampant. When they got an outside auditor, everything got cleaned up almost immediately. So I just think it's worth focusing on that kind of a thing down here, because, you know, I know when your budget's at stake, you're not looking too hard in some of these audits, and that's one of the problems. But I, I really think that we could benefit from some of that. Even the Chamber of Commerce guys were frustrated with the building department and with other, I mean, they're, they're saying it between the lines because they don't want to logjam things in any way. But thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Spindler, and Mr. Akala.
HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you, Mr. Coretts, for mentioning the most important thing on the report. Gross receipts are down. Less money is coming into the city. Anybody but Englander for supervisor. And come to our website, because you don't remember voting, but you voted to demolish Marilyn Monroe's house. We put that on our website. We have gotten more traffic on that one issue, LA City Council votes to demolish, than on any other single issue we have ever put up there. They're meeting, no Olympics for LA. They're meeting today, the NFL, about a team for LA, no team for LA. And the police car, now they're claiming that it was, that they thought they were being ambushed. So what did they do in Van Nuys? They got out of the car, they saw a black man, and they shot him to death, and you won't give us the name of the cops who killed a black man on Van Nuys Boulevard.
Okay, Mr. Spindler, Mr. Akala, and Mr. Marine.
No on Englander. And I have the official report prepared by the Jewish Council of Los Angeles, the economic report. It shows his council district job failure. The worst job growth in the entire city tied with Busqueano CD 15. The worst. There it is. The failure, the truth, the failure of Mitchell Englander, the job killer, Mitchell Englander, the job destroyer, the family destroyer, Mitchell Englander. No on the supervisor race. Anybody Nazarian, good. Anybody but Mitchell Englander. No on Mitchell Englander, the train wreck. Woo, woo! Chukka chukka, no on Mitchell Englander. Woo, woo! The train wreck, Mitchell Englander, no.
See, I got this little pig jumping through the hoops. You see right here? It's a little pig jumping through the hoops. This is what you all do. Your little pig jumping through the hoops. And you all stand together and you elect each other because you're a bunch of little pigs jumping through the hoops. And how do you stop a little pig by jumping through the hoops? You kick him in the nose. Yeah, you kick him in the nose and send him to a butcher shop and make him into carnitas. Anyway, what was I here to tell you? Stop creating homelessness, you son of a bitches. You get it? Stop creating homelessness, city attorney.
Yes, this is a GST badge, and it shows how we get shit done with Garcetti Shelter Dollars. Now, when are you going to come for this money? Ms. Martinez, Ms. Martinez, you got a conversation? You're live and it comes on Channel 35, and it shows y'all ain't paying attention and not trying to pay your bills. You got debts. Government Code 20283 shows the first should be last and the last should be first to make back payments to public employee pension benefit plans for the benefit of others than me, as clearly shown in 20283. Now, city attorney, why don't you show these assholes how to read, write, and count right? Come on. It's your job to do that, this is city attorney. You ain't supposed to have people this damn stupid for this damn long. Now, get your ass off your...
Thank you. Thank you. Your time's expired. Madam Clerk, what is before this body?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted. They are referred. Announcements, members?
The desk is clear.
Any announce, no, you're disrupting the meeting. Any announcements? Then everybody rise. Everybody rise for adjourning motions. Everybody in the council. Chambers, please rise. I'm going to start off with Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Elijah Morgan Galbraith. He was gunned down in Watts two weeks ago. He attended school in the 9th District. At the age of 16, with so much life, with so much life to live and love to give, Elijah was suddenly taken from his family, friends, and community in a most heartbreaking and unexpected manner. As a father, I feel sorry for the Galbraith family. There are none of words we can say to help ease the pain. My thoughts and prayers are with the family and ask God to give them the strength and acceptance that they need to get through this difficult period. For those of you who didn't know Elijah, he dreamed of becoming a football player. He wanted to go on to college, just like his older brother, and play football. He aspired to walk in his brother's footsteps and one day he's, and to one day be a successful role model. Although he was popular as a student and as a star running back at Augustus Hawkins High, he was a humble man and a dedicated student. This tragedy not only affected the Galbraith family, but also greatly impacted our community and his school. He lives behind a legacy of strength, joy, and laughter. He showed strength every day he stepped into the field and excelled in the classroom. He brought the community joy as he executed wins on the field. He provided laughter through his easygoing, down-to-earth personality. Elijah will be greatly missed. Those touched by his life will forever hold close memories, knowing that they gained so much from his living. May he rest in peace.
I'm continuing to look to my right. Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hasn't necessarily been a good period for political consultants. Not long ago, we lost Ross Bates on the Democratic side, who was a friend. And now we've lost someone else who was a friend of mine and a fellow West Hollywood resident for many years, Alan Hoffenbloom, on the Republican side. Alan, as a person, was a real mensch. As a political consultant, he was a resource to everybody because he came up with an idea after term limits made things so impossible to track who was elected and who was running with constant turnover, that he did the California Target Book, which allowed everyone to keep track of who the candidates were and to get a very unbiased and honest evaluation of everything. And because he was personally so well-respected, that actually proved to be a valuable tool. He also played a significant role as a longtime and very loyal Republican, but as a very moderate and reasonable one, to try and moderate the Republican Party. And he fought hard for years to try to get them to be more reasonable on gay rights, less strident on abortion, more reasonable on illegal immigration. less strident on abortion, more reasonable on illegal immigration. Unfortunately, he wasn't successful at that, but he made every effort, and I think he was very well-respected for that as well. He was a gay man as a Republican consultant. That probably made things a little more difficult as well. But he was courageous, he was mensch, and he will be very sorely missed.
He was a good man. I'm still looking to my right. Now I'm going to my left side, Mr. Harris Dawson's side. I don't see any on that side, members. This meeting is adjourned.